So we'll call the meeting ordered. I'm not going to use this because usually my voice carries pretty well. There's only one agenda item that I know we're not going to deal with tonight, and that would be the appointment of the rab board person. So for the exception of that, do I have a, um, you have a motion to approve the agenda as it's written?
Seconded.
Any further questions? Hearing and seeing none on the screen, all those in favor of approving the agenda as it's written, say aye.
Aye.
Those who abstain? Okay. So now we're going to go into public comment. I'm going to make the same comments that I do every single meeting that I've been involved in last several years. This is the only time that the board will recognize you. So once you've had your two minutes, we'll go on to the next person. Any questions or comments with that? Because that's the way we've been doing this for years. So David, I believe you're... Go ahead, David. You want to speak on the public comment?
Yep, or Jen. That's it. Jen, go ahead. There's on my turn second. Good evening. Um, I have a letter to the board and to Kat Gallagher, the superintendent. After much consideration, I have made the difficult decision to relocate to New Hampshire at the end of June. As such, I'm submitting my resignation from the position of Director of Student Services effective, um, June, at the end of June 2025. Words cannot express how much I've enjoyed my time in the LNSU. I've been fortunate to serve in several positions, each one a learning opportunity. I would especially like to thank Kat Gallagher for her unwavering support, guidance, and humor. Kat is a gifted leader, and the LNSU is better because of her influence. I'd also like to thank the board and the principals for the collaboration, thoughtfulness, and hard work on behalf of our students, especially those with disabilities. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to inform the board, the superintendent, Catherine Gallagher. No, thank you. That is, you may intend to retire June 30th, 2025. It has been my privilege and honor to serve the families and children of Lemoyale North for the past 24 years. When interviewing for the position at Eden Central School, I discovered in my research that one of my favorite authors, the Spanish poet Federico Garcia Lorca, had spent time on Lake Eden during the summer of 1929. It is written that Lorca's time in Eden had a profound effect on his personal worldview. My time at Eden Central School has impacted my life significantly. The experiences and relationships represent some of most, some of the most important in my life. I would like to thank all of my colleagues and the community for the support that I have received and continue to receive. I will miss you as colleagues, as friends, and as community members. Thank you.
Good evening. I also have a letter that I'll read. Uh, so it's Dear LNSU Superintendent Gallagher and LNMU USD Board Chair Nielsen. My current administrator contract as the Johnson Elementary School principal ends on June 30th, 2025. I'm writing to inform you that I will not be seeking a successor contract. I intend to fulfill the terms of my current agreement through the end of this school year, with my last day of employment being June 30th, 2025. I want to thank you both and the town of Johnson for giving me the opportunity to serve as a leader of this wonderful school for the past 16 years. I've loved working with the students, educators, and families of Johnson. This close-knit community deeply values its school and actively supports its educators in helping students experience success. Serving as a JES principal has been one of the most rewarding and fulfilling experiences of my life. However, in recent years, I've noticed that the demands of the principal role have been evolving. After much reflection, I've decided, uh, I've decided it's time for me to explore other career opportunities. I'm ready to hand this incredibly important responsibility off to a new leader who will help shape the future of Johnson Elementary School. I have nothing positive feelings for this school and community. I wish much, much success for JES going forward, but I will miss being Mr. Manning to the children of Johnson.
And I would say that in the state of Vermont, the average tenure for a principal is three years. And that is post 2020, so it begs a question. Turnover for teachers can be even higher. I am very concerned about the pressures that are bestowed upon teachers. They are everything to their students. And I know that in the case of Eden and Johnson, because we are speaking about Eden and Johnson, these teachers give their heart and souls to these children, and they love them unconditionally. And sometimes you have teachers who love children when other people aren't there to love those children. And I can't, you know, I've had experience in other districts, but the teachers here, I would go to war for any day on their behalf, our students, who would I, I would also go to war for. And I just think this has been a tough, a tough couple of years. Um, I know that there are lots of people in this room who would like to say something. Probably the board generally speaks last, but I know there are a lot of people here. And, um, do you want to just go around the room? Or the, I don't know.
Anybody want to make any comments as far as from the board? I can start if you might. I, I've had quite a weekend thinking about all this stuff as the hills and the valleys went. I can't.
Could you use a microphone? We cannot hear you over here. I'm sorry.
Okay, let me see if I can get it to work. Does this work?
Yes.
So I've had quite a weekend, um, having the fun of being the board chair of this, of this board. On any number of occasions, told you how much fun I have doing this job. This weekend put fun to a new definition and a new test. But we'll make it through it. My comment to the folks that are getting ready to leave or retire, I certainly support your decision, although I might not like it. But I certainly, the contributions that you've each made to the school system have been pretty incredible and pretty substantial. There's a lot of folks that don't realize, whether you're out in the public or within the school system, how many rules wrap around us. There's two John, there's two open Johnson seats. And when those two people enter into the Johnson, um, representation on the school board, they'll find out that a neighbor's conversation gets really, really complicated. So, um, I wish each one of you all the best going forward in retirement or in your career. It's been a blast working with you. I'm not the politically correct guy that you want me to be all the time, so it's been a pleasure working with you and for my part, sorry to see you go. So. Anybody else?
I, I'd like to take a second. And I'll tell everyone here who doesn't know, I'm in Pride, so just bear with me, and I'll try not to. Um, can everyone hear me? Okay, because I try to practice that. I, uh, you know, Kat says it's been a couple of years. It's been five years. Five years. And it's Kat's leadership and laser focus on student aid and what needs to happen, and the work she's done to build ties in the community and community partnerships that got us through. Got us through from the beginning and early 2020 to the quagmire that was left behind from COVID and all the fallout. And I have loved working with Jen and Betsy and David. And like them, I'm one of the longstanding professionals here. And I'm sorry to see you go. I understand. I'm glad you guys are moving on to things you're looking forward to. I thank Kat, I thank you, I thank all the senior administration and the board that has been here for the 10 years or more. But especially those of us and Kat who has hung through these last five years, they've been tough. And here I am saying it's been tough, and I'm just the business manager. I'm not facing everybody every day. So thank you all, and thank you Kat very much.
This is about our communities, and, um, I have enjoyed, we have enjoyed many, many great relationships. I had two, in fact, wonderful conversations today with the two people who are running for school board, Kyle News and Kari Ferrari, who are nothing but supportive, and I can say that. It's, it's harder when they're pitching your own whatever, but I can say it. And I, I look forward to that addition very much, should that.
Well, I didn't know any of this until tonight. I'm Jeff Hunsberger. I'm a representative. Eden is a unique community, like all of our communities are. There's, it's a close-knit community with lots of people focused on the health and safety and the education of their children. I wholeheartedly wanted to say to Betsy, thank you for your service, your leadership. You've put more years into the work that you've done, and you deserve a retirement that is full of happiness and fun and success, and it's going to be hard to replace you there as such a strong leader with so many years of experience. So thank you for persevering. Jen, behind the scenes, except for your special ed folks, Jen and I have sat on child protection team meetings together. We've worked on individual cases together. Her team and my team have worked together. I work at the family center and support youth. And I've seen the dedication that the special ed organization has had under Jen's leadership, and we are going to greatly miss that. It's not been easy for the last five years with the fact that you can't find special educators, that we had to contract out, that we had to put kids online with people from other places, maybe even other states. I don't know. But trying to do special ed support with that kind of an environment is, it's, it takes creativity. It takes skill, and it takes very close monitoring to make sure that that quality is what we're looking for. So Jen, thank you for the work you've done there. And to David, David has been in this community for a long time. He and his family have been involved with the Lemoyale Family Center's holiday project in the past as volunteers helping out and took a lot of robust involvement in that until we changed the program because of COVID. We had to switch the whole process around. So we lost the community engagement piece, but we're still able to do that work. David was there with his family and every day showed up for these kids and families in Johnson through COVID, through the flooding. One of the worst-hit communities with this flooding from 2023 from July. I was there every day as an emergency manager, working in that community every day. And I saw the impact that our school officials had when those kids came back to school and what they did with giving them a safe and secure place to be. So we're losing three of the most highly professional and skilled people in our community. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I want to wish you the best of whatever moving forward. And, um, it's a loss for us at this point.
There's nobody else on the board either here on the screen? Which wants to go last?
So Betsy and Jen and David, I haven't had the opportunity to work for you. It's been about a year, a little over a year, but I've had the opportunity to work with you. And in that year, I've seen such incredible dedication through your staff and your students and being a HR person that's going to have to try and fill your shoes.
Yeah, I could those no peek behind.
I'll speak louder. It's going to be really hard to fill your positions. The level of experience and excellence and knowledge that you bring is fine. I'm, I'm happy for you, very sad for us. It is a significant loss for Lemoyale North. I wish you guys all the best. And speaking about leadership, again, I've only been here a little over a year. And I am sincerely grateful to be able to work under Kat's leadership. She fosters a culture of excellence. And because of that, it has encouraged me to be a better version of myself. She sets a standard for our leadership team, the same standard that she holds herself to. You could go anywhere. She stays here because of her dedication and love of our staff, our students. We have a leadership team because of your leadership, and I am grateful to be a part of your team, Kat.
This is a collective leadership, a collective group who we work together to meet our goals.
Who's the mics?
Could you, I.
We can't hear you.
Can I hear anything you guys are saying?
Yeah. Anybody else in the circle here have anything to say?
It's always, huh? It's always hard to onboard new people like myself, but this team has been absolutely incredible. And David, Jen, and Betsy are three people who are leaving that really welcomed me in. And Kat has been amazing at helping me grow and learn in this position. So thank you to all three of you.
I'll go. Uh, you know, I've only been part of the leadership team now for about six months. But I do have to say I've learned a lot over the past six months from Jen, Betsy, and David. And I truly value everything that you have taught me. You know, coming from a different sector into the education field is, is much different. And, uh, you, all three of you have fostered such a, um, welcoming environment and definitely three leaders, and I say that because you, you definitely lead your teams. That will be truly missed, and leadership definitely is something that starts at the top. And I know Kat doesn't want to give herself credit for this, but she is truly the leader of all of us and, and we value everything that you, uh, you teach us. So thank you, Kat.
All right. Um, I'm Diane Riley. I am principal at Hyde Park Elementary School. First, I'm going to miss you guys like so bad. You've been my colleagues, Jen, David, Betsy. You've been a part of my life for, for many years. It's a challenging time for administrators, educators, and schools and families at this time. In challenging time, it's important to appreciate all of the incredible work our superintendent and leaders do, especially Kat, Jen, Betsy, David, who have been, had some especially difficult challenges over the last few years. We went through COVID together. We've gone through a lot together, and, um, the climate in schools and it's, it's challenging right now. This can be very discouraging for an educational leader. Through all of the discouragement, they have been unwaveringly committed to our students. Their leadership has made an inspiring difference, even when it's not visible or recognized. It's reassuring that our leaders are supported in these challenges. Positive change happens when we work together and support each other. Thank you guys for being part of my team.
Is anybody else in the circle? I know we'll turn it over to you folks, but Vanessa, what's on? Vanessa?
Yes, hi there. Can you guys hear me okay?
You can.
So, um, I originally wrote what I had to write, which was kind of in relation to the special board meeting on the seventh. But I just want to state first and foremost, I'm not here to point fingers. I want to be part of the solution. As of it, I've explained to David Manning and Catherine Gallagher, I really strongly believe in a firm education for all students. But I would be remiss if I didn't speak my truth and the experiences that my daughter has had, which has not been as bad as some of her friends, but, um, my daughter does attend JES. She's in the fifth, sixth classroom. Um, as the board is aware, there have been multiple complaints of behaviors ranging from full-on physical assault to sexual harassment, bullying, and anti-LGBTQIA harassment, as was experienced by my own daughter. Many of my daughter's friends have also shared their experiences with me of behaviors they have witnessed in the classroom or have had happen to themselves, which are extreme and scary. This isn't your average kids-will-be-kids behavior. The students are witnessing a level of behavior from other classmates that is unacceptable in any situation and that would qualify as criminal behavior if done in any other setting. When our classrooms become this dangerous, it opens up our district and our administration to lawsuits. Because what happens if and when a child becomes critically injured as a result of these other students causing very real physical harm? The way the behaviors have been handled in the school so far is teaching our children that accepting violence is okay. The way the behaviors have been handled is allowing these same students right back into the classroom. And just because they may have apologized, the victim is then expected to accept it and move on, only to have the same student continue the same behavior again and again. How many children will go on as adults to accept domestic violence in their lives because they grew up being taught to normalize and accept it in their school environment? I did meet with David last week, and I am under the impression that as of Wednesday last week, behavior management is getting some tweaks. I think this is a step in the right direction. What I want and need to know though is what happens next after having a student call a parent after an incident has happened? Do they get sent home? Are they allowed to return to the classroom? We need a tiered approach to this level of behavior, and in my opinion, the consequences need drastic measures. I can guarantee you that if a parent has to start leaving work or take time out of their day to come pick up their child, the situation will change. These children should not be allowed back into the classroom after assault has taken place or continued disruptions. They should spend the rest of the day in another area, such as the SSC. Also, whatever happened to out-of-school suspensions, we need to bring it back. Another question I have is what kinds of checks and balances are in place to ensure new approaches are being taken to address these behaviors consistently? How does the school board or administration go about this? And how will parents be communicated to as a result? I feel if we had more transparency, a lot of us would feel more part of the solution. I also want to address the program Hyde Park has implemented when their behaviors got out of control. Apparently, whatever program they have used has done wonders in managing these issues. Why can't JES implement the same program? What program is it exactly? I'm just kind of in the dark about it. And what do we need to do as a community to implement it? On the other end of the spectrum, I do worry about learning. I commend all of the teachers right now who are doing their best. There are some phenomenal teachers at my daughter's school. But I worry, how are they able to create a safe and constructive learning environment and really focus on materials when teachers are constantly having to maintain and address these extreme behaviors and disruptions? My daughter's teacher is going on a leave of absence at the end of February because of chronic stress and anxiety. We haven't received news of a replacement or how this is going to be worked out. If we are going to be using multiple substitutes to fill this position, are these people going to be trained in how to handle these massive issues? And how will this affect learning? I do want to state that a lot of us parents here tonight want to be part of the solution. We want to help. We recognize the struggles a lot of our educators are facing right now, but we absolutely need to completely change our discipline strategies and how these issues are being handled. We do want to help. I keep wanting to reiterate this. Our children's education, their physical well-being, and their emotional well-being are at stake. I don't, I don't want to keep catering to the students who make life miserable for the children in school who are there that actually want to learn and be part of a school community. They deserve time and attention as well. And I also want to state, thank you, David, for setting up this meeting for all parents to come together at the school on Thursday. I think that's a real great first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
I do. Just over here.
I'll go if nobody's going. I, I don't know if you need to, please, you know, please. Uh, I want to echo that right there. What's this black list I just found out about my daughter being on LGBTQ, whatever the trick is, y'all? About four years ago, my son was given a pot brownie at the school. Call as the kids go to the nurse. My kid didn't go to the nurse in the patrol. My kid, my other child at JES, blacklisted by kids who are, childhood officers in our, in our community, talking trash and making their kids feel like they're, they're choices. Y'all teach the LGBTQ, whatever it is, I apologize. The gay rights, everything. You teach it in class, but you don't teach how kids, how to respect each other. Dude, I grew up in Los Angeles. I was the only white kid on my block. I got beat up every day, every single day in Los Angeles. California penal code education system, we don't have that here. One of my kids had a great education system. But to get picked on, we know, we all are there. Every single one of us in this room, we're 16, 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, whatever it is. We all got picked on. I got picked on. I got beat up. I'm a big guy. I don't like to beat up people. I don't like to bring up problems. I know we're all part of the solution and we need to be. It's the kids, man. We're all going to die soon. The kids, they're going to take this up for us. What are we doing? What are we teaching them? This is crap, man. And to sit here and resign it because of shit going on? Scared of you. Crap. Stand up for this community, you guys. These kids need us. Man, the kid, like Kat, you are doing a good job. Every single one of you guys are in here stepping up, doing a great, amazing thing because none of us can do it. We drop our kids off expecting them to be taken care of, man, not to be caught up in drugs, not to be caught. My son has a fucking video online saying that he's a dirty whore by students in this school district. Are you kidding me, you guys? I know you can't tell that, but what are we doing? What are we doing for our youth, man? And I, I'm sorry, I get emotional. I don't cry, but boy, my adrenaline's running, so please just keep my breath and understand that I'm frustrated. I'm not mad at any one of yous. We all know that it takes a whole lot to bring it together. But I'm going to tell you, you guys recognize this face. I went on the news last time. I will not stop until we have some sort of control. And if you need my assistance on this board too, fuck, I'm retired, man. I just run a plow business, push snow. I'm down like a three-legged giraffe to help out wherever I can. That's what I'm here for because it's about our youth. It's not about us sitting at this table and getting mad at each other because we can do this. Thank you. That's my two minutes.
I do want to just say that, um, sitting here and everybody kind of just patting each other's shoulder is probably why this has been going on the last 15 years, what he's talking about. And that's been not addressing behaviors as assault, bullying, harassment, and sexual harassment. And the proper steps are not being taken by administration. It's also not noted that there is at Eden Central. It's also not noted that there is at Eden Central School, an investigation of safety. And that is also the step that I am prepared to take of investigating the safety of Johnson Elementary School because this is the job of administration. This is why you are paid through taxpayers to follow policy properly, to tell parents this is considered an assault and you should take these steps. This paperwork has to be filed, bringing families together of the perpetrator and the victim. This is not happening. The correct steps are not being taken. I was here on Tuesday. I attended the meeting, the special meeting for my family because we were sounding an alarm of safety, of patterns of behavior within the classrooms that are violent and aggressive, that are not being addressed by staff. They're going to an SSC classroom where they're given screen time and processed snacks, sugary snacks. They're being rewarded for their bad behavior and sent back to the classroom. And patterns of behavior continue. And kids are being exposed to sexual harassment, violence, assault, bullying, being kicked and punched and tripped regularly. And staff is not addressing it because administration is not telling them, this is how we are addressing these issues. And that is why our kids are being in unsafe spaces because administration is not addressing these issues properly. We have gone to Vermont Family Network. It was only going to advocates of Vermont Family Network was I able to learn about our rights and the processes that should be going on. Behaviors are being minimized by administration. Parents are facing retaliation and intimidation by leaders of this school board, of this Lemoil North Supervisory Union. And everyone's just patting each other's backs, pretending there's no problem. There's a huge issue at Johnson Elementary School, at Eden Central School. I came to talk about the safety of my children. As a single mother, a full-time single mother, I came before the board. I pulled my daughter and my son out of school for an emergency reason. I would not pull my children out of school. We've been going to JES for the last three years. We've been trying to make it work. I go into the school trying to improve the education through Four Winds Nature Program and teaching yoga to the youth to help them regulate, to help create a kind, loving community. And what is the administration doing? What are you doing? You are making six-figure incomes. What are you doing? I am a full-time, single mom, self-employed, and I am doing more than some of these people on the school board. Go into the schools and help out these kids. Go in and be a safe adult. Help out inside the school. The principals should be taking trainings outside of the school to improve the environment. It's been the same thing at JES. I have talked to many parents the last fifteen years. It's negligence and it's negligence from the board to that a bullying, assault, safety, and harassment are not being addressed as such. There are online trainings for teachers. It cannot be online. It needs to be in person. It needs to be going through the protocol. There has never been once a safety plan offered to me, to my daughter. And now it's too late. And when I came of safety concerns, the board recommended me going to Eden Central School where there is already investigation, a known investigation of safety. So the school board knowingly recommended that my children go to another school that is under investigation for being unsafe. And it isn't until I filed the sexual harassment because Vermont Family Network advocates had shown me what is claimed under sexual harassment. What is assault? What is criminal behavior? I am, I am not going to sit here and pat everybody's back. No, we can all be doing more. We can all be more generous with our time and our resources. It's an excuse about budget. It's an excuse about policy. You can get creative on how you deal with it. There is excessive screen time. There is not a lot of outdoor time. How are kids supposed to be regulated in a school where they're sitting inside of a room on a screen? There is research on this impacting our youth negatively. And you are just sitting there like, oh, our hands are tied. No, you're not, you don't care. That's what it feels like to us parents. You don't care. And a lot of us have had similar bad experiences minimizing a behavior, retaliation, and intimidation, and discouragement, and exhaustion. I will also do what it is in my power to find justice for these youths and the families who have been negatively impacted by the policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I have two people left that want to talk. Is there anybody in between those two?
I would echo her statement that it feels like it's teachers against parents a lot. And that's why she didn't like, you're all, you work together, you've worked together for years, so you all congratulate each other, say, great job. People on this end don't see the great job. We see our kids being neglected in the school system. So I echo what she said with that.
I know Jeremy already talked, my husband. Again, I'm Stephanie. I don't need a microphone. I'm loud enough. Thank you. I spent the entire weekend at Copley ER, at UVM in the Baird Unit with my son because of stress-induced seizures, because of the BS going on, the TikTok videos, the nonsense and the bullying posted. I don't know what the look is, Kat, but I don't need it.
I know what I'm saying is I'm sorry.
Again, I don't need it. My daughter at JES, LGBTQIA, Jeremy said the blacklist, dark side, started by a child who's, uh, teachings at home, I guess, don't appreciate that and don't include a community of individuals who think outside, who have different feelings than others. I just found this out last night talking to her.
Thank God it wasn't before.
Because of everything that went on with her brother this weekend. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I sit here disgusted. He is a junior in the high school. And again, this isn't the first time that the school has let us down as parents. There's so much we can do at home and so much we can do to protect them, but when they are here for eight hours a day, it is your all responsibility to protect them from what is going on here. And if you cannot do it, why do we continue to send them to a school? Why do we continue to support you? Why do we continue to sit in these meetings and listen to yay me, woo-hoo you, great job, everybody? It's not. It's not. I spent twenty-four plus years serving. And I sit at home every day wondering at my job, am I going to get a phone call? Am I going to sit in the emergency room again for three and a half days with my kid? Because it wasn't a neurological issue. It is a stress-induced panic anxiety attack that presents as seizures. Because of the crap going on in school, because of the videos being posted, because of the cyberbullying. I already spent a day this week, last week, in the, in the office with Mr. Remmers and with Ashley discussing all of this. I'm done. You guys need to step up and you need to figure it out.
Somebody sitting behind you?
Okay. My name is McKinley Faganberry. I have two young daughters, one just graduated from JES, one attended JES her kindergarten year, not last year, the year before, because there was some confusion about that. And obviously emotions are really high. As parents, we're scared. Our kids are having physical ailments. And it's really hard when your child comes home from school upset, not wanting to go back, when they're not sleeping at night because they know the next day is a school day and they don't want to go and they're in your arms crying. And when you have no choice. Because legally, your child has to attend school. Not all of us are fortunate enough that we can pull our kids out and homeschool them. And I was able to, for a long time, I also point out, I teach preschool. So like, I know how hard teaching is. And I know how things have changed in the last few years. And I know how hard our staff works. And I appreciate what you do. But we're coming in and we're trying to work with you and we're trying to tell you our experiences and we're begging you for your help and we're begging you to listen to us. And it feels like you're not. It feels like you're not. And sometimes it feels like you are and you're so kind and you make these promises. And then we go home and changes aren't actually happening. What, like what do I tell my daughter? I would drop her off at kindergarten. She'll be screaming, crying. Shove her off of me.
That's the scholistic we want?
Run, run down the hallway to get away while Amy Jones restrained her. She loved Mrs. Jones and she loved Mrs. Dolan and she loved the staff at JES. Something wasn't right and she couldn't tell me what it was and I kept coming into the school. I kept going to Mrs. Ballard and asking for help. I kept going to David and asking for help for seven years. I was going to David Manning with concerns. And so we don't know what to do anymore. Not just David Manning, I went to you too, Kat. Like, I followed all the steps I thought I was supposed to take. I emailed the teachers. I talked to the principal. I went to the superintendent. I started a petition at his advice. I got some things changed. Like, I am not trying to tear anyone down. I just need help. I need my child a bus to school because I have to be at work at 7:30. I need her to get on a bus. I need my other child in school because I'm a single mother. And I'm giving up financial security to have her home because I know that her mental and emotional well-being is more important than anything. And I can't send her back to Johnson, so what do I do? We're just asking for your help, you guys. We're asking for you to prioritize our kids over a deadline.
Is there anybody else? I know there's two that, okay, go ahead.
This is going to be really hard for me to talk. Just hearing everyone, how passionate we all are. For the, I know, I think just about everyone here, but if you don't know me, I live in Johnson. I have three kids. I have a student in Johnson Elementary in third grade, my daughter, who I love dearly. I have a middle school student that goes to Lemoil Middle School. I have a high school student that's a tenth grader. All three have gone through Johnson Elementary. I'm also a school resource officer. I've been in this role since January of twenty-four. And hearing what everyone has to say about Johnson Elementary, about the high school, about our school district. I'm in the schools every day and I'm extremely passionate about what I do. And when I hear people say our schools are not safe, I have a hard time trying to not take that personally. Because the sacrifice that I go through every day to serve our schools, our community, go to people's houses, try and save them from dying, try and keep our schools safe from people that don't want them to be safe. We do everything that we can. I mean, with every principal, I mean, with Kat, we're transparent with each other. We do everything that we can to try and keep these schools safe. There's a lot of terms being thrown around, like sexual assault, simple assault. Those are all criminal charges. And I'm certainly willing to have conversations about what those mean. I can pull up the statutes. We can look at it together. We can talk about juvenile law, criminal law, whatever you guys want to do. I can tell you exactly what I see in the schools. I'm with your kids every day. Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm at Johnson Elementary and Hyde Park Elementary. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm at the high school tech center and the middle school. I sit in morning meetings. I read stories. I read books. I go to the SSC and talk to the kids. What, what happened? Tell me about why you're here. I do this every day. I try as best as I can. Anytime there's, there's incidents of students picking on other students, I try and pull them in and talk to them and talk through it. When there's students that are getting bullied or suffering about depression and tell me that they want to kill themselves, I work with them. I work with the parents. I go to their homes and I talk and work with the families. I take this job seriously. I work a lot of hours. I put my own safety at risk to try and help our community, to help our kids, to help your kids. If you have any concerns, talk to me. You all know me. My kids played soccer with your kids. I helped referee soccer for your kids. You know me and you know that I mean the best, okay? I'm here. I take safety paramount at our schools. That's why I'm here. I was separated from my family for four and a half months and went through intense training that was very demanding. I'm forty-two. It was hard. And I went through it because I wanted to be the most trained. And I go through continual training to help our students through mental health issues, safety issues. I train on how to assess situations in the hallways to keep our students safe. And you guys know I do this every day. And I also have Warren Lyon, he's my partner and other school resource officer. He's equally as passionate about this job. Parents, school staff, if you guys, members of the community have any questions about school safety, concerns, if your students are dealing with anything, you can come to me as well as the school board, Catherine Gallagher, the principals. We're a resource, we're school resource officers, not just for the schools, but for the parents, for the students. Thank you.
Is somebody else touch? Close up?
Yes, I would just like to say, one, as a board member, I'm sorry it's gotten to this extent, why you're all here now and why we haven't been hearing about this since the get-go. That's really sad. I really don't know what else to say, but you know, they sit there and they say, oh, we pat each other on the back. And yes, we do and we do good. But if we're wrong, we also admit we're wrong. But when we don't know what's going on, we can't fix that problem either. And we do try to be transparent, as transparent as we can be. And I'm really upset and I'm really saddened at this whole thing. at this whole thing. It shouldn't have come to this.
I'd like to say something. I don't know if I need to, actually, I don't need a microphone. Twenty-eight years in the education field, as a parent educator, as a lunch lady, and office administrative assistant, and now facility coordinator. My role, I go to every single school in this district, even Cambridge Elementary, though it's not part of my job. And every time I walk into that school, I'm so happy, especially those elementary schools. Because there's positivity and there's students laughing and I'm, and I see, because I know you, we've interacted before, I know that there is not a perfect place. But these people are doing the damnedest that they can do. I was in the planning room the other day. And I watched this woman cut up an apple and process something with a kid. While, while, there was a leak in the, in the building wall and the floor was wet. But she took the, she had that student helping him through whatever he was going through and cutting an apple for him and just having a nice conversation. Betsy, I worked at Eden for two months. I filled in the office when their sec, their secretary was out. I was blown away, uh, how kind Betsy was to the kids and how kind their planning room was to the kids, regulating them, trying to get them through. Public school system accepts everyone. And I've had this conversation before, before Eric Remmers, Remmers was here. I came to a meeting and was disgusted because someone was saying the middle school is, is, you know, terrible, they, you know, they were just going on about how poor the middle school was. Why isn't it like the tech center? Well, the tech center can, app, they have applications to get those kids. We get every single kid that comes in the building, every single kid. And we take them from where they are and we hope that they growing and being better people. We're modeling them. We are. I watch it every single day. We're modeling them. So we're trying, we're, we're really, really trying. Sometimes it's just, you can't get there. And I will be that person who, I'm walking in the halls and I hear the foul language, I'll call them out on it and it's exhausting. It's exhausting to every single step that you make. Excuse me, gentlemen, we don't use that language. Excuse me, we don't use that language. I like to joke with the kids, I'm a beautiful woman and I don't appreciate that kind of language around me. I use a little bit of humor. We are trying every single day and I, I wish we could say more, but we are trying. And to have David and Betsy retiring is just, my heart is hurting and, and my girl Jenny too, known her for a long time in special ed. I'm saddened that this, this is where we're at. We are, we are trying, we are all trying. From Kat all the way down to our lunch ladies, we are trying to be kind to these kids every single day and hold them accountable. Because I am that person that will hold your kid accountable, she is that person that will hold your kid accountable. These principals, we are trying to hold these kids accountable. But there's only so much we can do. And we're trying, just understand that we are trying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, uh, hey, everybody, can everyone hear me right now? Hi, everybody, a lot of you know me in a lot of capacities. I want to say good evening. Um, this is a very, uh, deep conversation. I know lots of you in lots of roles. I know you as mentors, as colleagues, there are neighbors in this room. There are present, former students, present and former, uh, parents that I've worked with over the years in many capacities. I've seen you in the classroom, I've seen you on the basketball court, I want to say this. The only path forward in all this is we all have emotions. We all have concerns, but as teachers, as educators, and I'm going to speak as an educator right now. And yes, I have emotions as a resident, as a taxpayer, as an educator and as a parent. I want to assure you that the path forward is one where we come together. And we can do that because we are resilient. And when we find common good and common goals, we can find that. And I apologize, like, I, I am not immune to the emotional state that many of us are in. But we can together. And I want to say thank you. Um, I appreciate being a part of this community in so many roles over so many years. So, um, just know that we together can do this if we find those paths forward. Thank you for your, thank you for the time.
Eric, can I just quickly say, first of all, I want to introduce myself, I'm Bethany Ampere, I'm the principal of the high school, the principal of the high school. And I do want to say, like, for the last five years, yes, it's been really tough. I have worked, I'm not done yet. Our school, I invite any of you in, anytime, come in and check in and come check out what we're doing. Come check out our hallways, come check out our classrooms, because amazing things are happening. And when there are concerns, they are heard and they are addressed. And I just want to say that, um, because I care more about your kids and even if you have elementary kids, they're going to be my kids soon. And I care a lot about them. Um, and I, I mean that from, from just a true deep place. I would not do this job if I didn't.
Thanks. My name's Eric Hutchins. Uh, I came here as a representative, spokesperson for the, the Memorial North Unified Educators Association today. But after hearing this outpouring of emotion from parents, I felt like I need to briefly address this, I'd be wrong not to do so. I really feel for you folks who are struggling with behaviors in the schools. And as a teacher union rep, I've been dealing with this from teachers for a long time, who are also struggling with behaviors in the schools at times. And I'm going to tell you folks the same thing that I've told teachers for a long time, which is, the challenging behaviors and the issues we are dealing with the schools over the last three or four years are a new challenge. And they're being experienced not just at this school or at schools in this district, but I talk to educators all across the state of Vermont all the time, in every district. And not just in Vermont, but across this country. And I watched a story on 60 Minutes Australia last week where they have a new developing problem there of kids who have too much anxiety and stress to be able to go to school. They won't get out of the car, they're crying, they have issues. So this is a global problem and, and I really believe that people in this district are doing everything that they can. I, I know that teachers were somehow wanted to blame in our school, that it was this policy or this person or that thing. Now, this is happening everywhere and every school with all kinds of policies. And I think while we haven't fully addressed this as, as well as we should, I will agree with you, there's more we can do. But people are trying to do everything they can. And you can say a lot and mistakes will be made and probably have been made and will continue to be made. But you cannot say about this board, this superintendent, these administrators, or the teachers that I work with, that we do not care. Because people definitely care. Everybody wants every kid to be safe in the school. And one more thing I'll say about this situation before I move on to the other thing is that for every one of those kids that are, you feel is targeting your kid or is a bully or causing problems, that kid has parents that feel that kid has a right to an education too. And to walk that tightrope of adhering to federal standards on giving every kid an education and doing the proper documentation, it's, it's, it's being done, but it is a difficult balancing act that was easier when this was a thing that happened once or twice a month, right? And now because it is more frequent, it is more challenging, there are, you know, fewer resources and more things to do. Um, but my heart goes out to you and I really believe and I know, um, that things have gotten better in my experience at the school in the time that Bethany Ampere has been our principal. She works dawn to dusk, extremely hard, cares more about kids than anyone I've ever met. So, um, I, I want you to know that I'm, I'm not minimizing your concerns, I think they are real. But I, I want you to know that this group of people in this district is really doing everything they can, the teachers I work with and the administrators. I did come here originally tonight, uh, as a spokesperson for the teacher negotiating team, uh, with my colleague, Robin Bryce. We just, uh, concluded our negotiations with the board negotiating committee on Thursday night, January 9th. Um, we met with them four times. I know that when I started working this district, uh, 17 years ago, I applied for my, I worked at the tech center for two years. And when I applied for my job at the high school, 15 years ago, there were over 100 applicants for that position. And when Peter Levine called me and told me about that, I was very excited. Um, and it was super exciting for me. When we interviewed for our last social studies teacher position three years ago, I believe we had six applicants. And we interviewed three of them. And we offered each of them the job in succession and each of them took a job at another higher paying district nearby to us. We got very lucky with the fourth guy, he's a better teacher than he is in interview, um, but he's a fantastic guy. But we were lucky. For a long time, this community has struggled having wealthy, higher paying districts on either end of Route 15. Um, and that's been a real challenge for us. And now we have the additional struggle that we have increasing costs, inflation, healthcare, whatever you want to blame it on, that has put huge pressures on property taxes that we understand. So going into this negotiating season, I anticipated that we might have a very, very difficult negotiation with the board. I was right. However, that board listened to us, was frank with us, was direct with us, was honest with us and told us what they could do and they listened to our concerns and we listened to their concerns. Uh, we reached an agreement on Thursday and then this afternoon, the Lemoyle North Unified Education Association ratified that agreement. And I don't think people appreciate how hard it is to thread that needle between investing in our kids and our education and creating the best school we can while also being diligent about the taxpayers' dollars and making sure they get their value for their money. And it's especially hard in the district we're in with the resources we have and the competing pressures that are there. But I really feel that this agreement is both going to create a budget that is going to respect taxpayers' dollars and that I sincerely hope and believe those budgets will pass on time meeting day. And I sincerely hope and believe that the, that the settlement we reached will allow us to retain the teachers we have and attract new teachers when we need to do that. And I just want to particularly thank Sue Prescott, Tina Lowe, and Stephanie Sweet, uh, Katie Odette, Mark Nielsen, Bart Bazio, and especially the lead negotiator Phil Kiley for, uh, conducting a respectful and back and forth dialogue on this. It allowed us to come to what I think was a very difficult, but good agreement that will preserve the future of the school and allow budgets to pass. Thank you.
I'm under the impression at this point, both on a TV screen you've done our public comment. So with that, we'll conclude public comment. So our public comment session at this point is done. We're going to resume with a regular school board meeting. One thing I will say, the board chair sitting here, we hear you. Um, I came into this meeting knowing about two potential resignations, got a surprise on the third one. A few folk think, a few folks think we're patting ourselves on the back for a wonderful job. Here's what I'll ask you to think about. As you go to your job and you've been working with somebody for 20 years and they up and retire, what do you do, criticize them as they walk out the door?
That's what the government did to me, see you, dude. Thank you.
I worked for the government too.
That's what the US military did to us, they didn't get two shits.
Bottom line is, we hear you. The job that I have, I get paid to fix things. So we'll work on fixing this and we'll make it go right.
I do just want to say that I heard a number of people say, and I'm, I'm from Belvidere, I'm a grandmother, okay? So I don't have personal experience with this.
Either educators, there's board members, there's officers, but there's also children in the room, okay? So I just wanted to acknowledge that you're very brave and you're doing a great job sitting here and being a part of this. Because that matters a lot. And I wish the other two folks were still here because good for you. And you do have community members that care about you and they want you to feel the same as any other kid in the school.
Thank you. I think if any of you felt personally attacked by all that, because there was a lot of defending yourselves, we're not attacking you. We're not, we, we just want what's best for the kids, all right? We want the kids to be supported. I'm actually looking forward to the meeting Thursday night. I'm actually looking forward to the meeting because I will be down at Johnson Elementary Thursday night. And if you folks come down there, um, you'll, you'll probably, I'm processing this on what they call an introvert. I don't get, um, really into conversations until I've thought about them for a minute or two. I get down here on Thursday, I'll have had some time to process. And I will lay some things on the table for you publicly in that session that you might not want to hear or might not want to understand. So that's what I'm gonna, what's that? There are some statistics that I'm going to give to you folks in Johnson. What's that? There's a, there's a community meeting in Johnson on Thursday. This coming Thursday.
Which has not been emailed out.
What time and where?
Two parents.
It, it actually has, like, from the school, for the fifth and sixth grade parents. I, I mean, I know it's been communicated, how it's communicated.
It was out last Monday night to every Johnson parent, that was fifth and sixth grade Johnson parent. What, what time is the meeting? 5:30 to 6:30, school library.
So everybody's got that, 5:30 to 6:30, Johnson Library, Johnson Elementary School Library?
Can I just put in a plug for maybe just a robo-call to families? Might be useful, it sounds like some people didn't get the information.
More than fifth and sixth grade.
I invited fifth and sixth grade parents to the meeting, that was the initial, uh, purpose.
And I don't know if you explained the purpose, but the purpose was to address behaviors specific to the fifth and sixth grade class. And so, um, the Johnson Elementary School staff and administration did hear those concerns and it was their idea to bring community together for that. So, you know, I, I understand the concerns, but this is a constructive step.
Thank you all very much. So, Belvidere Central School. What's that? Yeah, I was asked, I was asked to go to that first. Go to that first and I'm going to come back. So we have a Belvidere Central School status discussion. Can you hear me? So what we're going to do is, we're gonna, because we've got guests here from Belvidere Central School to talk about how we're going to deal with that, we'll go to that first and then we'll come back up on top and go down through the routine business and the board orders and legislative update. Who's going to talk about the Belvidere?
Do we have people here who wanted to talk about Belvidere? Do we have anyone from the select board? You all online?
Do we have anybody on the screen calling in from the Belvidere Select Board? This could be really easy if nobody's going to talk about it.
Yeah, it may end up off to the next meeting.
Okay.
There he is. Earl just raised his hand.
Earl, you just gotta unmute.
Earl, go ahead and unmute and the floor is yours.
Anyone mute him? Earl, do you want to try to call in on the phone number?
It's right at the bottom of your screen is the mute button.
Earl, you need to unmute yourself if you can hear me.
It says it won't, it says it won't let him because when he's texting me. I don't think Earl has anything necessarily presented. No, he was just asked to attend the meeting.
Yeah, I think it's just a sort of a discussion of disposition of the building and if an interest.
I'm assuming, because we've got some Belvidere folks here, that there's an interest in having the Belvidere School turned back over to Belvidere. Is that correct?
Dylan, can you put him on speakerphone? And Will, put him on, we've got a microphone there.
He has a mic. Hello?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Um, I was made aware of this meeting. Not sure what was the whole thing for Belvidere, Belvidere Central School to be on the agenda other than seeing there was a status. So I was kind of hoping to, uh, get some information. Yes, I am, uh, the chair of the select board for Belvidere, but I can't say that I am in that, wearing that hat at this moment. This is just a concerned resident of the town.
So I guess maybe the question is, does this board have, are they ready to? Are they interested in discussion on the disposition of the building?
Am I, am I free to speak?
Sure.
Um, I know there are some articles of agreement that are part of the whole thing that happened with Act 46. And I believe in that agreement that the district is supposed to make the town aware of their intentions.
So the question is to this board, are we prepared and ready to start the process of turning the buildings back over to the village, to the town of Belvidere?
If the board would like additional information, I don't think the discussion can come back in February because that's the annual meeting. But in March, the discussion could come back. And if there's any information that the board would like in order to further discussion, you'd let me or Dylan know, um, and we can gather all the data for you.
Getting the information towards the, no, sorry, Melissa go next. But I think it is the one next step. I mean, we did, um, of it not being open to share, um, with the budgets across the state and everything, looking at that, I mean, what are we going to do to get Belvidere up to code when the town would, I can't speak for the town, but I can speak as a member of the town that, I mean, we would be interested in taking the fact or the articles of agreement if the rest of the board, um, agreed. And I know that there's a process where the select board has to make that motion. Is that correct, Mark? That they would have to, you, uh, so Earl, if you were to go to the select board, your other team members and, you know, write a letter to the school board, say a letter of interest, then we can go from there.
Okay, but I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm supposed to just speak, but, um, I don't know if any of you have the articles of agreement in front of you. I, I, I did have, um, but circumstances this morning led to me not having it in front of me at the moment. So that's why I'm online. Otherwise, I'd have been in there in person. Um, but my understanding is the school district had a certain number of years, what they were going to do with the school. And I believe there's like two consecutive years of it not being used or not consecutive years not being used. And then they make a decision. And if their decision is to see if the town is interested in it, that's when that thing happens. So I'm not, I know the school's been closed for a year. I don't know if this discussion has been brought up any other time at a non-consecutive year. Um, I'm just thinking that, um, looking at the articles of agreement would be wise.
So what we'll do on our end is we will get the information for the board about turning it over and what we need to do for that. At the same time, I would ask you, Earl, to talk to the select board in Belvidere and make sure obviously you want it back so that we can get this conversation forward and get the job done.
Understood. We'll, we'll follow through.
Is that okay with you folks over there?
Can you repeat that?
Basically, what I've asked Earl to do, we're going to get some information from Deb as far as what the process is to turn it back over. I've asked Earl to get with the select board down there in Belvidere and make sure that that's what they want to do as well. And then we'll start rolling this process to them.
I mean, that's the process. Is there information about what is possible, what isn't? You mentioned at the last year that the building, that's taxpayer money. There are certain restrictions while can and can't happen. And I guess I'm talking to town members and just, we're, we're actually having some events in school, um, throughout the winter. And I was going to have a suggestion box. What do you want to see happen in school? And if I could ask something a little more specific, it would be nice. So I guess I'm looking for, if you can just point me to a statue, tell me where, where are the details about what is actual realistic, realistically possible? Then that would help. I mean, Earl's one of three people on a select board, but there's a lot of other folks that just in passing, you talk to them and they've got ideas, you know, but we're, can you do that? Hey, I don't know.
Once the building is turned back over to you, that's pretty much up to you what you do. It's your building at that point.
You can do it in a moment.
So we'll research if there's any covenants that we're unaware of. But the deed just went through a search when we merged. So the property, the deed and everything on it went through that process already. The only thing that's coming to mind to me is if there's federal grant money in a period of time. But as long as it's not gone to commercial use.
Okay.
The restrictions probably aren't there. I'm not going to swear to it, but that would be my next step to do research. And Dylan's next step to do research to see if there are restrictions on it. So if the town is interested, then they will be aware of that.
Okay. Well, and can I just confirm that the ISP for the building is consolidated? Is that true? Okay. And the hotspot on the outside of the building is RTO and First Lane. Do I have that right?
Let's, let's talk that first this week.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll confirm that.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because I know we're probably only about halfway through the year before we're able to consider to be able to file it. Maybe March, we're beginning to be able to get some testimony from Jan and the committee or from some of your, from the people who pay us that, like, how things are going at the bottom of the bill, the degree, suitability of that board. I think we'll be able to get some, some presentation, some testimony from that board. That'll put us about midway through the second half. Seems like it's pretty great. Educated decisions this week. Whether that's the, at that time.
Sure, yeah, I'll get to that.
You got a glass of water? Is anything else?
I think it's just, at this point, there's no decisions being made. So the board doesn't need to act other than, you've given us some marching orders and we'll go do our research and everything else and come back and continue the conversation.
Good, it's backed down now.
Are you all set with that, Earl?
Yes, that, that sounds, that sounds good to me. I just, one of the things I was going to add was that in, in, one of those items in the article was that once the town, if, if the town chooses to take over the building, that it needs to be used for a community type, um, um, events and things like that, purpose wise, for at least five years. And then whatever happens from then on can happen. But like I said, uh, it'd be wise for everybody to take a look at those articles and just get premierized with it. And then we can move forward and, um, work out something so that it works out for the town and for the school district.
We all set with that moving forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming.